This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everyone. It is now 7:31. This is the December 17th, 2020 work session of the Allendale Mayor and Council. Welcome to everyone who is joining us via video or teleconference. We ask that you please mute your devices at this time so as not to distract from the business of the meeting. There will be several opportunities for the public to be heard tonight, and we will advise you at the appropriate time. Michelle, if you could please read the Open Public Meeting Act announcement.
Sure. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the notice requirements have been satisfied. The meeting dates for the year are confirmed at the annual meeting, are posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building, published in the record within the first 10 days of the new year, and copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger. Notice of this meeting by the December 11, 2020 sunshine notice was sent to the record, the Ridgewood News, and Star Ledger, and has been posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and borough website.
Great. Michelle, please conduct the roll call.
Councilwoman Homan?
Here.
Councilman O'Connell?
Here.
Councilman O'Toole?
Here.
Councilman Sasso?
Here.
Councilman Stroch?
Oh, here.
Councilwoman Wosinski?
Here.
And Mayor Bernstein?
Here. Thank you. So, public comment, this is the first of three opportunities tonight for the public to speak. So, anyone from the public wishing to speak, please somehow motion to me and then state your name and address, and you'll have five minutes to speak. So, I'm looking to see. I don't see anyone, so I will close the meeting. This time, there are two more opportunities. Administration, we'll move to the administration part of the work session, and we will start with the agenda review. We have a full agenda tonight. The minutes of the November 12, 2020 work and regular session are all listed for approval. Everyone was in attendance, and everyone is eligible to vote. The next is, we're going to be swearing in our police officer, a new police officer. She's not here yet. She's coming at 8 o'clock?
Uh, 7:45.
At 7:45. Okay, so I have some things that-
She, I'm sorry, not to interrupt, but she's on the agenda for the regular session after 8 o'clock.
Okay, so I wanted to, I know we spoke about it before. I wanted to speak about it again. I'll wait till she's here during the regular session before the swearing in and whether Councilman O'Connell or O'Toole or anyone else has anything to say at that point. We will welcome her, and we will swear her in. Adoption of ordinances. So, the following ordinances, we'll have second reading and public hearing tonight. 20-20-19, 20-20, 2021, 2022, 2023, 2024. Okay, so 2019 and 2022 set the salary ranges for our non-union Upsyia union employees. And so I know we had discussed some which needed amendments or adjustments.
Yeah, well, those are the contractual ones.
Right, okay. Ordinance 2020 amends our water rates, and Liz, I'm not sure whether you wanted to speak to ordinance 2020 for a second reading. You don't have to. Just want to give you the opportunity if you wanted to speak.
Um, no, I just, I haven't heard any communications of anybody having, I mean, obviously, nobody likes to pay more, but I think that the water value is out there, so now I'm hopeful that everybody will vote to pass this. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Ordinance 20-21 is a bond ordinance that appropriates an additional $120,000 for expenses related to the acquisition of 220-230 West Crescent. So, this is for second reading. I don't know if there's anything to add, but Amy, if you want to add, or Alyssa? No, okay. Just want to give you the opportunity. Ordinance 20-23 repeals 30.3 of Chapter 26 that was adopted earlier this year and amend Section 31D regarding provisions, rates, and fees for off-duty law enforcement officer services and use of police vehicles. As I mentioned at the last meeting, there was some inconsistency between the two sections, so Ray and Alyssa worked to make those adjustments. And I don't think there's anything else that we have to add. It's for second reading.
It's really-
Right, thank you. And ordinance 20-24 authorizes the COVID-19 special emergency appropriations to fund anticipated deficits that the pandemic has caused. Councilman O'Toole spoke to that at the last meeting, so probably nothing else to add there. Okay, on the consent agenda, we have 12 resolutions listed for approval. I think maybe we just had some tightening up or one modification to one of those. For 20-267, authorize the change order number one and final payment Crescent Meadow Drainage refurbishment project on Q. The borough engineer is recommending a change order to this contract for actual quantities of materials measured and performed. 20-268 is the bill list. I've gone over it. Matt and Amy?
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you. 20-269 authorize a refund for 2020 tax overpayment for various properties. This is a routine resolution to refund property owners when we receive overpayment on their taxes. 20-270, we're canceling a balance from the Bergen County Open Space Ordinance that's not needed. 20-271 authorize dedication by rider police outside duty motor vehicle trust fund. This is a resolution that allows our CFO to establish a trust fund when the revenue is received from use of borough motor vehicles during police outside duty. 20-272 and 20-273, for On-Q Technologies authorized contract extensions. These resolutions extend the current contracts for as-needed snow plowing of borough roadways and facilities through December 31, 2021. And I'll mention it during Mayor's report, but the snow plowing, you know, big kudos to the DPW for everything they did. So, I'll mention that then, but we know how important this is to have in place. And on the, there was just a typo, 2020, we're changing to 2021 in the heading.
Yes, in the titles of Resolution 20-272 and 20-273, I had, I put that the contract term was January 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2020.
Sorry.
It should be 2021.
If we could figure out how to go back in time, right, we'd all be going back, right? Okay, thank you.
Do we want to go back to the beginning of this year?
No, no, not this year. We don't want to do this one again. Okay, so, and 20-274, authorize grant submissions. This resolution is a necessary component of an NJDEP grant that we submitted for remediation of 230 West Crescent Avenue. And Amy, I give you the opportunity to speak to it if you want to. If not, I'll just continue through the consent agenda.
Yeah, no, this is just a resolution authorizing the grant. We actually did already approve, go for the grant, but this is a resolution just agreeing that we are going forward with it.
Okay, great, thank you.
Nothing else to add.
20-275, the schedule of the 2020 sign and die meeting and the 2021 reorganization meeting. So, as we've done, you know, in, I think perhaps every other year, at the end of this meeting, we're not going to close this meeting. We're just going to, what's the best word? Adjourn it. We're going to adjourn it. Then we're going to pick up this meeting, which is the last meeting in 2020, and we will start in January 7th at 7 o'clock. We will conclude the end of this meeting at 7 o'clock, and then at 7:30, we'll have a reorganization meeting. So, this is just setting forth that. All information to the public is that how to access those meetings will be sent on the borough website. 20-276 to award the contract, the inlet reconstruction for On-Q Technologies, Inc. The borough recently sought RFPs to repair and reconstruct storm drains on an as-needed basis. On-Q Technology submitted the lowest proposal and will be awarded the contract tonight. Thank you to Director of Operations Ron Kistner and Borough Engineer Mike Freeland for working on this. The next two, 20-277 and 20-278 are to approve the 2020 salaries of Upsyia White Collar Unit and the non-union employees. With the Upsyia's memorandum of understanding signed, the borough is able to proceed with setting the 2020 salaries for the White Collar Unit employees in accordance with that agreement via Resolution 20-277 and the non-union employee salaries via 20-278. And so, 20-278, we're amending, we just had one small adjustment on one line. About the 10th line down for the Director of Operations where it says 139, 528, we're going to change that to 145, right? Okay. Okay, and do we have any questions on the consent agenda? Okay. At the end of the regular session, right, at the end of the regular session, the governing body will also be authorizing going in to closed executive session via Resolution 2-279 for the purpose of contract negotiations in the Water Department. No formal action will be taken once we return to the open session other than to recess the meeting to the sign and die meeting on January 7th. So, similar to what we did at the last meeting, we're going to go into closed session. We'll take a break. We're going to close session, and then we will come out of closed session and go back to our regular meeting, and then we will, at the end of that recess, to our January 7th conclusion. Okay, anyone have any questions? No? Okay, then let's go start with the council reports. Ed, would you like to give your report?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. We had OEM meeting, and numbers are going up. We talked about perhaps doing the mayor's video again just to keep people informed on what to do and to practice social distancing and wearing masks and washing hands and all the stuff we did at the beginning of the year, so it keeps the numbers down. They also laid out a plan for the vaccine to give it to essential personnel and trickle-down, so hopefully springtime. I think I remember April, May, they're hoping to have the vaccine ready for, or everybody should have it by then. The call numbers for, as of this afternoon, are 14,737, 911 calls are 1,511. Fire department calls are 157. EMS is 372. Officer Helmer completed his lead training and is certified to teach it in the schools. Bill Proppke completed an active shooter course, and now he and Officer Bartoloma can, is certified so they can roll it in as part of the firearms program for everyone. And the last thing is, everyone knows, we lost our OEM director, Scott Dever. Wish his family condolences, and I know he was a longtime Allendale resident and a volunteer for everything under the sun, and he was good friends with my wife, and he will be missed. So, I just want to reach, put my condolences in. I'm sure everyone else will add to that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman O'Connell. Thank you. That's in my report as well. Councilman Sasso, would you like to give your report?
Yes, thank you, Ori. So, the Land Use Committee has not met since our last meeting. We met actually the morning of our last meeting. I've sent two draft ordinances to the committee for review, so the, thank you, Jim. I see you nodding. As soon as you can get back to me with that, that'd be great. As I mentioned in the last Land Use Committee meeting, I'm very eager to take a deep dive into our noise ordinance and refresh that, and curiously, with the snow, I got an email from a resident this morning, very early, actually, asking me if it was okay to use their snow blower at a certain time. And so, you know, people are obviously thinking about it, so I would like to, you know, keep that on our radar as everybody is homeschooling and homeworking in this new normal. I think the look at our noise ordinance is a good opportunity for a refresh. That's all I have. Thank you. Oh, and I'd like to try to squeeze in one more meeting before the end of the year, if that's possible. I know it's two weeks to go, but I'm going to try to send something out. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Councilman Sasso. Councilwoman Homan, would you like to give your report?
Sure. First of all, I also just think Scott Dever was such a great guy, and, you know, I always knew of him, but when I first came onto the council, he was so generous with his time and really educating me on the OEM activities as I came on, first onto the Public Safety Committee. And so, Allendale and myself, we will definitely miss him, and my condolences to Scott's family as well as his friends, and I know there are many. We, let's see, Water has been very busy. We did have a Water Committee meeting this past Tuesday. Some notable things just to share with the council and anybody that's listening in as residents. Our Water Utilization, Lane has been amazing on our DPW, but also works, you know, as I said, with Water. He's been wonderful in working with Jeff Pickenich. I just had a call again today with our borough engineer in looking at our numbers, and between Lane and Jeff, we've definitely been able to utilize pretty much only Allendale Water for the last almost two months, which is great, since we had to use so much of the Suez Water. So, thank you to Lane and to Jeff. And thank you, and hopefully, everybody will support the rate increase for Q1 2021. And people may be aware that we've had a couple of water main breaks. We've used two out of the 10 that are kind of in our contract with Suez for the year, starting in August. I did hold the community meeting and received very positive feedback from the meeting, and I just want to share how grateful I am for the support of the Water Committee to put together all the information that was necessary, as well as a huge thanks to the public for attending, for following up with questions, and really for being interested. You know, besides questions, I got a lot of text messages and just an awful lot of support, which was really wonderful. And I hope that Water continues to be top of mind for everyone. I have been communicating, trying to set up a date with the NJDEP. As I shared in one of the previous meetings at the Northwest Bergen Mayors, we had agreed that a number of us would, as elected officials, be interested in meeting with NJDEP just to make sure that the lines of communication are open. Particularly, top of mind for me is trying to determine if there will be any additional funding that's available to support the new treatment facilities that will be needed. And then, lastly, we're continuing to work on the paperwork for a RFP. The goal is to have most of that paperwork together by the end of the year, and that's pretty much my report. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilwoman Wosinski, would you like to give your report?
Yes, sure. So, as many of you know, last night, we had a Land Use Board meeting, and I'm happy to say that the Land Use Board unanimously voted yes to approve the 220-230 project. We have been working on this project for quite a long time, as everybody knows, and I really think that this project is the best for the borough. We have worked out the space that we could provide a community room that's going to be able to house lots of events, future events for many people in the borough, seniors, the youth, and everybody in between. The borough office space is going to be much more efficient to be able to serve our residents. So, in the long run, it is a big win for Allendale. We've been working with this developer, Hampshire, for about two years now to try to bring this to fruition. So, I just wanted to really thank the Land Use Board for all their time, their service, and their effort in this project, which is going to be a great project for Allendale. I wanted to also bring to everybody's attention that we had our hometown hero, which is Heidi Gross, who was just honored by the 5th District, Josh Godheimer. As you know, Heidi's a longtime resident who has done countless work with the borough. She started with Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, and recently has revitalized the Allendale Rotary Club, which does international, amazing international work, but also she wanted to give back to the community, so they very generously donated $5,000 to our bandchild. She also spearheaded providing an alliance between the Rotary and Oasis, so they, weekly, which is still going on during COVID, providing food for all of Aces underprivileged people in different communities, et cetera, et cetera. She's just a gem in Allendale, so I was just very, very happy that she was honored that way. And we also had a fabulous group of women who came together so efficiently and managed to deliver and assemble and coordinate 125 goodie bags for our seniors. So, we had tremendous feedback from the senior community. We pulled together as many lists as we can to try to make sure we covered everybody. I'm sure there's some that are missing, but we're working on that for future years, but it was a wonderful treat that they all got, especially in times like this when our seniors, more than ever, are stuck at home. Our streetscape is done, for the most part, for now, until we get the lights in. The light, part of the lights, I believe, are in. We're still waiting, I think, for the conduits. When they come in, we're going to be pushing them up and pushing them out, I mean, in, I think, what, February, Ron? So, downtown still looks great. We have our wreaths up, so it still looks festive, but once we get our new lights, it's going to be fabulous, so I'm really looking forward to that.
Amy, I'd like to get the tour so much sooner, I think.
Oh, good, 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 good. Can't wait. Can't wait for my new flower baskets. It's going to be, it's going to look beautiful, and the workers, I have to say, were great with our merchants, so it just really was a win-win also for Allendale. Scott Dever, my gosh, I've worked with Scott for so many years, and most recently, you know, during COVID and helping to open up Crestwood Lake, and I valued and appreciated his assistance and his feedback through all of that. So, rest in peace. There's just nothing that we could even say about that. It's just sad for Allendale altogether. So, RIP Scott Dever. I want to thank our DPW for a great job last night. I'm sure that's going to come out from everybody, but they did a spectacular job. Our roads are spotless. It was a really long storm for them. They were working all night, and it didn't actually even end until this morning, so they are hopefully getting some well-needed rest. And lastly, I want to thank, actually, Liz Homan for the water. This is going to be a really big decision that Allendale is going to have to come to. So, I just really appreciate Councilwoman Homan for trying to educate the community as much as possible, and I just encourage everybody to pay as much attention to this because this is our water. It's super, super important. We have a lot of big decisions to make in the borough, and I just applaud everybody who has already been attending and asking questions and just keep them coming, and there's no one better qualified to answer the questions, and if she doesn't know them, she will get the answers to them. So, thank you, Liz, again, for your service at the last little town hall meeting you had for the water, and then actually this evening, right before here at 7 o'clock, for educating and answering everybody's questions again. So, that's it for me.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Absolutely. So, the administration, finance, and HR committee actually met earlier this evening. Our discussions have turned to next year's budget and some of the decisions that we're going to have to make to bring in an acceptable budget. Revenue's being down across the board makes it a bit more challenging, but we're still in the very early stages. Other than that, we discussed some potential upgrades to the borough website and some housekeeping items. People next meet this committee the week after next for our next budget meeting.
Great, thank you very much. Councilman Stroch?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Bernstein. My DPW report, my final DPW report of this year. I can't thank the guys enough. As Amy indicated, they worked through the night, didn't finish until around lunchtime today. You know, it, but I felt like they did a great job, and, you know, as Amy said, they're getting some well-deserved rest, I hope. The leaf program, the fall leaf program is ended for the year, and it went very well. It, you know, it went smoothly. What more can I say? We took delivery of a new street sweeper. I know this is not a big deal for most people, but it is for me, and Dan Davis and Dan Richards are both using it, and it's nice that we have control over the sweeping of our streets, whereas in the past, we would pay for each one. The winter cleanup of the borough facilities was completed yesterday before the storm, so, you know, we're really, we're finishing up the year pretty well. And amazingly, somehow, we got a new five-ton rooftop unit installed on the DPW building, down the New Street building, yesterday before the snow hit. You know, it, timing sometimes works in our favor. So, I just wanted to say thank you to the entire DPW crew and really all of the staff in Allendale. You know, I know they're paid, but I feel like they're giving 110, 120% all of the time. And of course, I want to thank all of the volunteers, the hundreds of volunteers in Allendale that all contribute on a daily or weekly basis to making this town a little better. And, you know, Scott Dever exemplified that. He was involved in many parts of the town, not just the ambulance corps, which, of course, he was a long-term member of. So, Scott, I'm going to miss you, and thank you. So, Mayor Bernstein, I'll end my report there.
Great, thank you so much, Councilman Stroch. So, it's 7:58, or 7:57, so I'm not going to get my report in. So, yeah, so what I'm, what we're going to, we will, I'm going to request a motion to adjourn the work session, but I do want to say when we start the regular session after the pledge, if you can please remain standing for a moment of silence for Scott Dever. So, we'll begin our regular session that way. So, I would request a motion to adjourn the work session.
So, move.
Go ahead, Homan.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, okay, so we will end the work session, and we will come back in two minutes. Thank you very much.
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, everyone, welcome back. It is 8:01. This is the December 17th, 2020 regular session of the Allendale Mayor and Council. Welcome to everyone who is joining us via video and teleconference. At this time, I ask you please mute your devices so as not to distract from the business of the meeting. There will be two opportunities during this meeting for the public to speak, and we will advise you at the appropriate times. Michelle, please read the Open Public Meetings Act announcement.
Sure. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the notice requirements have been satisfied. The meeting dates for the year are confirmed at the annual meeting, are posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building, published in the record within the first 10 days of the new year, and copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger. Notice of this meeting by the December 11, 2020 sunshine notice was sent to the record, the Ridgewood News, and Star Ledger, and has been posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and borough website.
Great, and I'm going to ask you all to rise to salute the flag, and please remain standing for a moment of silence for Scott Dever.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, and I too have some words for Scott that I have in my mayor's report. Michelle, please conduct the roll call.
Sure. Councilwoman Homan?
I am here.
Councilman O'Connell? Councilman O'Connell. I see him. He may be having technical difficulties.
Yeah, no, I see him too. He's here.
Councilman O'Toole.
Here.
Councilman Sasso.
Here.
Councilman Strouch.
Here.
Councilwoman Willsinski.
Here.
And Mayor Bernstein.
Here, thank you. Approval of the minutes, I would request a motion to approve the minutes, November 12, 2020, work and regular session minutes.
So moved, Strouch.
Thanks, Jim, second.
Second.
Thanks, Matt. Michelle, please conduct a roll call.
Councilwoman Holman.
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell. Councilman O'Toole.
Yes.
Councilman Sasso.
Yes.
Councilman Strouch.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Willsinski.
Yes.
Great, thank you. I next open the meeting to the public on agenda items only. So if anyone wishes to be heard on agenda items. Hi, Kristen, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, everyone. It's Kristen Sarnes, 74 Heights Road. I just wanted to get a little better feel for ordinance 2024 and just get an understanding of what the revenue losses, what some of the categories of the revenue losses for $260,000 that we've experienced in town this year related to COVID.
I'm getting there. It's, yeah, right, yeah. You want to, I must listen once to... Yeah, so Lisa can speak to it, Matt can speak to it, Amy can speak to it, I can speak to it. So this was, you have the email from before?
Yeah.
Kristen, just give us a second. Rather than shoot from the hip, we're going to pull up some, some data.
Okay, thank you.
Can you hear me now, Mayor?
Largest category, what are some of the categories?
So, Lisa, do you want to? Yes.
Would you like me to take this?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. Um, there are five categories. Uniform construction code fees. We had anticipated $275,000. So far, we, we think we'll only get about $176,000. Interest on investments and deposits. We anticipated $130,000. We'll probably only get $40,000. Interest and cost on taxes. We anticipated $75,000. We'll probably only get $55,000. Fines and costs for municipal court. We anticipated $26,000. We'll probably only get about $18,000. And lastly, fees and permits. We anticipated $72,000, but we'll only get about $29,000. So the difference between the estimated and the realized is about $260,000.
Thank you. And do you think that we're going to recover that right away for next year? Or do you think those kind of circumstances are going to continue for a good six months or so? Or what is your estimate?
Um, I'm thinking that most of those will continue through at least half the year. And, you know, the interest, I don't know that that's going to recover next year at all.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Great, thank you, Kristen. Anyone else in the public wish to be heard on an agenda item? Not seeing anyone, I will close the meeting to the public for that portion. Next is swearing in of a police officer. 20-266, authorize hire a police officer, Nicole DePasquale. I just want to give, just briefly to that. As many of you know, we started the process and we spoke of the need to hire a police officer due to an upcoming departure in the police department sometime in 2021. There's a process that goes on. The goal was to get someone through the interview and hiring process and into the police academy by 2021. We had an unbelievable group of candidates. We started with 100 and worked our way down to six, the top six out of 100. And I can tell you without hesitation that all of the six finalists could be and would have been great assets to Allendale and would have been great officers. That being said, on a Saturday morning, Councilman O'Toole, Councilman O'Connell, Ron Kistner, the chief was here as well. We interviewed those six. And one, we thought, rose above the rest. And for the Public Safety Committee, that candidate was best suited for Allendale, bar none, a place that we all cherish. And I think that came through in the interview process, how guarded we were about who's going to be an officer in Allendale because many of us born and raised here, moved back with our family. We cherish this town. We wanted someone that we thought was befitting for, for that. Nicole DePasquale from Paramus. She's not going to brag, so I'm going to brag a little for her.
Should.
Okay. Captain and starting goalkeeper for her varsity women's soccer team at TCNJ. Girl Scout Silver Award recipient, which I know speaks to some of the councilwomen here, and we take that very seriously. Soccer coach for, for children, for youths at World Class FC. Worked with, with animals, dogs, has shown leadership skills all throughout her life, a great work ethic. She distinguished herself remarkably in a very daunting interview process. She has proven herself. She said she's mentally and physically tough. She proved it that day, and I'm sure she's going to prove it here in Allendale. There's no doubt she'll be a great addition to our police department, and I look forward to swearing her in at the regular session today. Now, I also want to extend my sincere thanks and appreciation to Chief Sherb and the whole police department for handling this hire, this hiring process with professionalism. It was seamless, the way you navigated through when you brought us six wonderful candidates. And from that, we were able to find Nicole is our gratitude to you. And a huge thank you and gratitude to Councilman O'Connell, Councilman O'Toole, and Ron Kistner for all their hard work, their input and efforts on the Public Safety Committee to make that happen. So without, I don't know, Ed, whether you want to speak or Matt, you want to speak, but I wanted to give you both the opportunity.
Can you hear me, Mayor?
Yes, I can.
Okay, I just want to echo your comments. She, it was, we, we certainly did have a handful of great candidates, and I want to wish her congratulations. And I was happy to say that she was tops on all of our lists. And I think she's going to make Allendale or do Allendale very proud, so I wish her the best of luck.
Great. Yeah, I can't add much more than has already been said, but we're so happy to have you coming aboard. And, you know, we didn't, we threw you some hard questions that day, and you were, you were the top one. So we're, we're happy to have you. Congratulations and welcome.
Thank you. And would any other council members like to speak as well? I want to get, give you the opportunity if you are so inclined.
Sure, I'll stay welcome. Glad to have you joining the Allendale Police Team. And I'll look forward to having the opportunity to meet you in person shortly.
Great.
Same with me. Congratulations, welcome aboard. Can't wait to meet you.
Great, thank you. So with that, I would, 20-266, I would request a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you, Ed, second.
O'Toole.
Thank you, Matt. Michelle, please conduct a roll call.
Councilwoman Holman.
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell.
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole.
Yes.
Councilman Sasso.
Yes.
Councilman Strouch.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Willsinski.
Yes.
Great. Okay, sir. Pleasure. Your hand on the Bible. I state your name.
I am Pauline.
We solemnly swear.
We solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will build true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
To the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All of the duties of police officer.
All the duties of police officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And everyone else said, from the heart.
Thank you.
We love this town. We think the world of our police officers. They are, they're like family to us, and you're going to find that. And so we can, we are happy to welcome you into this family, and we're thrilled that they have you.
Can't wait.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much. You as well. If you want to take a picture, do it. Be your whole family.
You guys need this?
No. No.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you, appreciate it. Yes, I'll bring it.
It says smile.
Awesome.
Yeah, thank you.
It's hard, it's hard.
And Council, Councilman O'Toole.
Yeah.
And I. Oh, you are now.
It's interesting.
And really smiling.
Awesome.
Great.
Billy Pajama.
All right, one, two, three. Great. Merry Christmas.
Oh, thank you.
Great.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Now, you don't have to. If there's anything that you would like to say for all, all these, no pressure, you don't have to. But I want, I want to give you the opportunity.
Well, just peek into the microphone.
I just want to thank everyone. Chief Sherb, thank you so much for this opportunity. Sitting here in this interview, you know, hearing you guys talk about Allendale and the passion that you guys have for this town is truly amazing. And it just makes me so excited to start working here. And I cannot wait to go through this academy, kill it, and then have a great career in Allendale. So thank you so much.
You go, girl.
Yeah, okay, yeah, yep. Yep.
Do you want this back or your? No, you can do it.
Okay.
Congratulations, thank you.
Good. Okay. All right, so for everyone, that was clearly the highlight of the night. So if you want to go home now, I wouldn't blame you. But, um, okay. Next, we will continue. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. And Chief, thank you very much. Totally appreciate it. Next, continuing with the agenda, ordinance for second reading and public hearing, ordinance 20-19. Michelle, please read the title of the ordinance.
Sure. The following ordinance published herewith was first read by Title Only on December 3, 2020, and posted on the bulletin board of the lobby of the municipal building and Borough website. It's ordinance 20-19, an ordinance to amend Chapter 53 of the Code of the Borough of Allendale Officers and Employees to fix the salaries, wages, and compensation of the officers and employees of the Borough of Allendale for the year 2020, non-union employees.
Great. I open the floor for public comment on ordinance 20-19. Not seeing anyone, I would request the council member to make a motion to move, to pass, and adopt on second and final reading ordinance 20-19. Notice.
So moved, O'Connell.
Thank you. Notice of same, according to law, second.
Second.
O'Toole, thank you, Matt. Michelle, please conduct a roll call.
Councilwoman Holman.
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell.
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole.
Yes.
Councilman Sasso.
Yes.
Councilman Strouch.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Willsinski.
Yes.
Great, ordinance 2020. Michelle, please read the title of the ordinance.
The following ordinance published herewith was first read by Title Only on December 3, 2020, and posted on the bulletin board of the lobby of the municipal building and Borough website. This is ordinance 20-20, an ordinance to amend, supplement, and revise the code of the Borough of Allendale water charges, Chapter 262-11.
Thank you. Open the floor for public comment on 20-2020. Not seeing anyone, I would request the council member to make a motion to pass, to move, to pass, and adopt on second and final reading. Ordinance 2020, notice of same, shall be published according to law.
So moved, Holman.
Thank you, Liz.
Second, Sasso.
Thank you, Steve. Michelle, please conduct the roll call.
Sure. Councilwoman Holman.
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell.
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole.
Yes.
Councilman Sasso.
Yes.
Councilman Strouch.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Willsinski.
Yes.
Great. 20-21, Michelle, please read the title of the ordinance.
The following ordinance published herewith was first read by Title Only on December 3, 2020, and posted on the bulletin board of the lobby of the municipal building and Borough website. This is ordinance 20-21, bond ordinance to appropriate an additional sum of $120,000 for the acquisition of real property for affordable housing, municipal facilities, recreation, open space, and other municipal purposes in, by, and for the Borough of Allendale in the county of Bergen, New Jersey, to make a down payment to authorize the issuance of bonds to finance such additional appropriation and to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds.
It's a lot of work, right? I open the floor for public comment on 20-21. Not seeing any, I would request a council member to make a motion to move, to pass, and adopt on second and final reading ordinance 2021. Notice of same, shall be published according to law.
So moved.
Thank you, Amy, second.
Holman.
Thank you, Liz. So, Michelle, please conduct a roll call.
Sorry. Councilwoman Holman.
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell.
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole.
Yes.
Councilman Sasso.
Yes.
Councilman Strouch.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Willsinski.
Yes.
20-22, Michelle, please read the title of the ordinance.
The following ordinance published herewith was first read by Title Only on December 3, 2020, and posted on the bulletin board of the lobby of the municipal building and Borough website. and posted on the bulletin board of the lobby of the municipal building and borough website. This is ordinance twenty dash twenty-two, an ordinance to amend chapter fifty-three of the code of the Borough of Allendale, officers and employees to fix the salaries, wages, and compensation of the officers and employees of the Borough of Allendale for the year 2020, yes, union.
Thank you. Open, um, the floor for public comment on ordinance twenty dash twenty-two. Not seeing any, I would request the council member to make a motion to move, to pass, and adopt on second and final reading. Ordinance twenty dash twenty-two, notice of same shall be published according to law.
So moved, O'Connell.
Great, second.
Second.
Thank you, Amy. Uh, Michelle, please conduct a roll call.
Councilwoman Holman.
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell.
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole.
Yes.
Councilman Sasso.
Yes.
Councilman Strouch.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Wosinski.
Yes.
Great. Thanks, Michelle. Um, the twenty dash twenty-three, Michelle, please read the title of the ordinance.
The following ordinance published herewith was first read by Title Only on December third, two thousand and twenty, and posted on the bulletin board of the lobby of the municipal building and borough website. This is ordinance twenty dash twenty-three, an ordinance to repeal in its entirety, twenty-six dash thirty point three of chapter twenty-six of the Borough Code of the Borough of Allendale, and amend, supplement, and revise twenty-six dash thirty-one D of the code, of the Borough Code.
Great, thank you. Open the floor for public comment on twenty dash twenty-three. Not seeing anyone, I would request the council member to make a motion to move, to pass, and adopt on second and final reading. Ordinance twenty dash twenty-three, notice of same shall be published according to law. So moved. Great. Thank you, Matt, second.
Second.
Thank you, Amy. Uh, Michelle, please conduct a roll call.
Councilwoman Holman.
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell.
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole.
Yes.
Councilman Sasso.
Yes.
Councilman Strouch.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Wosinski.
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance twenty five twenty-four, Michelle, please read the title of the ordinance.
The following ordinance published herewith was first read by Title Only on December third, two thousand and twenty, and posted on the bulletin board of the lobby of the municipal building and borough website. This is ordinance twenty dash twenty-four, an ordinance of the Borough of Allendale in the county of Bergen, state of New Jersey, providing for a special emergency appropriation pursuant to NJSA forty-eight colon four dash fifty-three M to fund a deficit in operations of the borough directly attributed attributable to COVID-nineteen, which is anticipated to be experienced by the borough in the current twenty twenty fiscal year.
Great. Um, I open the floor for public comment on twenty dash twenty-four. Not seeing anyone, uh, request the council member to make a motion to move, to pass, and adopt on second and final reading. Ordinance twenty dash twenty-four, notice of same shall be published according to law. So moved. Thank you, Matt, second.
Second, Strouch.
Thank you, Jim. Uh, Michelle, please conduct a roll call.
I promise I'll get this right in twenty twenty-one.
No, you can do it.
Council. Councilwoman Holman.
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell.
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole.
Yes.
Councilman Sasso.
Yes.
Councilman Strouch.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Wosinski.
Yes.
It's great teamwork. You cover me when I'm astray, and I'll cover you, all right?
Thank you.
Together, we'll do it together.
Thank you.
Consent agenda, um, which I went over, the only, um, uh, so I went over in the work session, the only change just, um, as amended, I guess, the last one, L, twenty dash two seven eight, to approve the twenty twenty salaries, the non-union employees. Um, the number on the line, about nine or ten down for director of operations, we're changing that number to a hundred and forty-five thousand. So, uh, that's the only minor amendment to the consent agenda. So I would request a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended. So moved. Second.
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 Thank you, Steve. Um, Michelle, please conduct a roll call.
Uh, I, I also just wanted to point out that on resolutions twenty dash two seventy-two and twenty dash two seventy-three, um, I made a typo. The contract periods are January first, two thousand and twenty, through December thirty, I'm sorry, January first, two thousand and twenty-one, through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one.
Great. Okay. So, um, uh, did we get the first, the motion and the second? Okay. Then please conduct a roll call.
Councilwoman Holman.
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell.
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole.
Yes.
Councilman Sasso.
Yes.
Councilman Strouch.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Wosinski.
Yes.
Okay. Um, any unfinished business? Don't think so. Any new business? Uh, committee reports, my report. Um, so I will, most, a lot of what I was ready to say or prepared to say has already been addressed, so I'm going to pare it down. Um, but last week, we lost the pillar of our community, John Scott Zieber. Um, not only was Scott our longtime OEM coordinator, he also served the borough as a police dispatcher for over twenty years, and as an EMT with the Allendale Volunteer Ambulance Corps for decades as well. He was a thorough and consummate gentleman, always calm, grace under pressure, and a reassuring calm presence during times of emergency. And members of OEM and public safety, we worked hand in hand with him sometimes on a daily basis, uh, in this last year. And he was wonderful, and you could always look to him for a voice of reason and a guiding light. He loved Allendale. We loved him. And Scott, thank you for your dedicated service to our town. Job well done, sir. Um, on behalf of the governing body and our residents, um, I offer our sincere condolences to Scott's family and the borough, and the police department are planning to honor his memory in a more permanent way in the springtime. COVID-nineteen remains a main focus of twenty, the twenty twenty comes to a close. The borough continues to monitor this ever-changing situation. As we mentioned in the last few meetings, we've resumed our weekly OEM meetings to discuss the numbers and evaluate all possible steps that can be taken to keep our residents and our employees and first responders as safe as possible. I want to thank OEM, the Police and Fire Department, AVAC, Board of Health, Public Safety Committee members, Councilman O'Toole, Councilman O'Connell, Sir, and Director of Operations Ron Kistner for their diligence and selfless service to our residents. This team has worked relentless throughout this year to stay on top of developments and to keep our residents safe and healthy. Um, the summary statements aside, our numbers are going up. Um, uh, each week, we report the numbers, and they've gone up, I think, fifteen, by fifteen last week and fifteen this week. So our numbers have gone up thirty active cases in the last two weeks. Um, with school and work resuming, college students returning from home for the holidays, I guess it's somewhat to be expected. Um, but I implore everyone to heed the guidelines. Wear your masks socially and physically, distance as much as practical. Wash your hands regularly and practice the other CDC recommendations to help curb this virus. Um, the feeling is that the next couple of months, being inside, et cetera, is not going to be good. The vaccine's coming out, um, but we're not there yet. Um, but I'm hopeful that we're seeing, finally seeing the light at the end of this tunnel as vaccinations have begun to be administered in our area. Uh, it gives me, and I know all of us, great hope that the healthcare workers are receiving the protection that they so desperately need as they continue to protect and care for us and our members. Um, and I think we intend to start up the weekly videos to get the word out to the public regarding vaccinations um, and other important information. Uh, and as you know, you can get the information on the state website, covidnineteen nj.gov. The December edition of the Allendale Happening newsletter went out last week, and it was posted on the borough's website. It's full of information. If you do not receive our constant contact emails, please sign up for the website, www.allendalenj.gov. You can also receive an emergency notices from the borough by signing up for Swift Reach. With winter officially beginning on Monday and storms coming through like it did, these are the best ways to receive the timely information. Speaking of the storm, my hat's off to Ron Kistner and the DPW. I, I, I went to, to thank them in advance yesterday at five o'clock, and I, I knew what a long night. I spoke, I spoke to Ron, and, and they worked through, through the night. And I can tell you, in the morning, our streets were, were, were great, considering what happened. And that doesn't happen by itself. You know, they were out, they were there the whole night. Um, it's not the first time, they just do an exemplary job. So Ron, I know you're on, thank you to you and, and, and to all of, of the members of the DPW. Truly appreciate it. Please look for the twenty twenty-one garbage and recycling newsletter in your mailboxes in a few weeks. I would like to thank Suburban Disposal, uh, for their tremendous service that they provided this past year. Despite the many challenges present, garbage and recycling pickups were consistent, and communication between the borough and suburban went well, worked well. I'd like to remind everyone that our sign and die meeting is scheduled for, uh, Thursday, January seventh, twenty twenty-one, at seven PM, and the reorganization meeting at, uh, seven thirty that same night. And last week, as Amy mentioned, the Allendale seniors received a nice goodie bag full of treats to bring them some cheer during this difficult time. I received emails, or whole received emails. I know, you know, a lot of people did. Um, Councilwoman Wosinski, Holman spearheaded this effort, and were assisted by Mayor Emeritus Liz White and former Councilwoman Jackie McSwiggin and members of the Allendale Circle of Support, who generously participated. Um, my thanks on behalf of the whole borough to the four of you and to everyone else who was involved. Um, you know, people said, I got the emails, and I know you did too. This is kind of one of those things that makes Allendale what, what it is. You know, all volunteer, goodwill, et cetera. So, um, thank you on behalf of all of us. I would be remiss if I didn't mention, um, the Land Use Board meeting that happened last night. I thought the Land Use Board did a wonderful job the whole way through. It was, um, it was a long, uh, there were several meetings started in October. I thought that the comments from the town were good. The Land Use Board was, um, I thought was, was great, they pulled together. Um, and to Amy, to Councilwoman Wosinski, who spearheads the team, the two twenty, two thirty team, um, and to Liz, and to everyone, um, you know, to, to be, to have done what you've done, to continue to do what, what you do. Um, the hours, you know, I, I, we don't even want to count or try to count those hours. So thank you to, publicly, I want to thank both of you and, and the whole team. And Amy, as long as we're, as long as you're, you're in the hotspot, uh, thank you for the work on, on the streetscape. Um, you know, a lot going on. Certainly, um, if you want something done, you, you ask a busy person, and, and you exemplify that, um, this year. So thank you for that. Two twenty, uh, twenty twenty was a year that tested all of us in many ways, but we look forward to twenty twenty-one with great anticipation of good things to come. So on behalf of the governing body, I wish to those who celebrate a Merry Christmas and to all a safe and healthy new year. And that is the end of my report. I feel like day to the Yule log, but we're not, we're not done. So, um, staff reports, right?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, actually, very, very busy two weeks since our last meeting, uh, contract matters, negotiations, ordinances, uh, working on specifications with Mr. Kistner. Uh, but I do want to, uh, commend and congratulate the borough on what's been mentioned before, the, the Land Use Board approving the development application last evening. A very, very important step forward, uh, but it does bespeak a lot of work ahead of us all in now putting together and finalizing all of the contract documents that will allow the, the closing to be effectuated and making sure that the, uh, the approval resolution, hopefully, working with the Land Use Committee and the applicant, make sure that's all tightened up, uh, in, in a way that best protects the borough. Um, as you mentioned, Mayor, I want to, uh, say to those celebrating Hanukkah, Happy Hanukkah. Uh, and since this is our last, uh, meeting before the, the seventh, a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year to all.
Thank you very much, Ray. Michelle, you have anything you'd like to report?
Sure. Thank you. Uh, the Clerk's Office is just winding down, uh, two thousand and twenty and gearing up for two thousand and twenty-one. And, um, I just wanted to say, um, about Scott. Um, he was a pleasure to work with. He was always friendly and always patient. If I couldn't get him the information right away, or it took, um, a while. Um, he was a very nice, uh, guy, and, um, my condolences to his family. And just, um, you know, Happy Hanukkah. I think tonight is the last night. And Merry Christmas to those who celebrate, and, uh, Happy New Year to everyone.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, Ron, anything you'd like to report?
No, I'm really looking forward to going to bed, so. Thank you.
I don't play, how, it was almost a weekend of Bernie's, who's the guy who, who they prompted, Bernie. No reason, there's no way you should still be standing after, after this many hours, but thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
Lisa, would you like to give a report, anything you'd like to add?
Uh, no, we're just closing out the year and, and, um, as Matt said, getting ready for the next year's budget.
Right. It's going to be very challenging. Thank you very much, Lisa. Um, public comment, open the floor to the public on any matter.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Wait, I can't see you, but I can hear you.
Mr. Thomas. Jim Thomas, thirty, thirty Arlington Avenue.
Good afternoon, good evening, sir.
Good evening. First, I would like to congratulate you on the leadership that you have, uh, displayed during this most difficult, uh, year. And I trust the, uh, next year will be somewhat easier for you, uh, as it will be for all of us. Um, as you might expect, I have a few questions for you, um, in, in closing the year. First, will you publish a full and complete financial accounting of the redevelopment program, uh, and its revenue projections?
So, I'm straining to hear.
Can I repeat?
Yeah, you say to get, because where our, our audio is, there's no mic. I'm not hearing it, Michelle's, it's coming from Michelle's computer, so say it again.
Will you publish a full and complete financial accounting of the redevelopment project along with the revenue projections that will be in force at that time?
Yes. I mean, ultimately, yeah, all those numbers would be made available.
Point or step in the process, will the Borough of Allendale receive title to the new municipal building and its slot?
Just say it again, so I can hear you. I'm sorry to make you repeat, but I don't want to answer something you didn't ask.
At, at what point or step in the process of, with the Borough of Allendale receive title to the new building and the lot on which it sits?
Yes. The, right, the, the front lawn is to, would be subdivided, and the borough would obtain the simple absolute or title to the front lawn.
Do you presume that will be after the building's completed?
So I'm, I'm looking to, to Ray West to make sure that his, for input.
You know, we have, uh, we have cross guarantees. Um, obviously, we want to make sure, and this may be the spirit of your question, we want to make sure that the developer must complete the project since some of the financial aspects of the transaction are geared to the money that will be expended, sort of an in-kind transaction on building the municipal facility. So there are cross default provisions where the developer cannot just build out the refurbishing of the warehouse and build out the residential facility without simultaneously completing the municipal component. So I think that's what you're asking.
Uh, yes, I guess that's the answer, and I, is that stated in the agreement, uh, to complete satisfaction of, of Harry? That, that's a question.
So it, the earlier question, right, at the end of the transaction, it, it, we, the borough will own the, the property on which the building sits?
And the building.
And the building, correct. Yes.
Uh, one more question or two more. Because it was a major, a minor subdivision, the Land Use Board could not include the very important public street in its resolution last night. Uh, US Mayor can make its dedication by Hampshire a condition of sale. Uh, will you do that?
So, um, Mr. Thomas, I, I remember you asking the question, and I also remember the experts who said that it would be the same outcome, um, whether it was, um, a public street or not. So I, I don't think it, it, other than what you had said in your question, and you're, you're a smart person, and so normally there, you know, you, you ask thoughtful questions, but I think the testimony of the experts was that the outcome would have been, would But I think the testimony of the experts was that the outcome would have been would be the same whether it was a public street or not.
Well, I'm not sure that's correct. I don't know what they meant by outcome, the the fact of whether or not that is a public street versus a present situation is very important to the future of Lot 240 as well as what may happen with respect to the new owners or the future owners of the apartment building. But the basic issue here is that by making that a public street, it doesn't require any more of the applicant because it will make the applicant's apartment building qualify under 33 and 35D. So the the issue really is a question of whether or not you will make that, since it makes no difference, apparently, will you make that a condition of the sale? One more question. Mayor, last evening, the Chair of the Land Use Board voiced his disappointment that the new building would not include a council or court chamber. He was not enthusiastic about the four-story height of the apartment building. And other residents were critical of some features of the of the plan. Is the schematic of the building fixed now? Or can you reconsider the use and layout of the building if you were inclined to do so?
The the answer is that the the certainly the the structure, I'd say the four corners of the building are pretty well defined in the plan in terms of the interior, the exterior. Subject to economics, even even the size of the building could be changed. I mean, those are within the municipal prerogative. But obviously, just addressing what you just said about the chairman's comments, there is a a significant cost factor associated with adding the municipal chambers to that building. So if you're saying, is it possible, it's possible. That may be different than asking whether it's feasible.
We can't, did you hear you? You're speaking and you're it's green, I just couldn't hear your response.
Beg your pardon. The answer is then the schematic, which is the current use, which indicates a, well, it's been referred to as a basketball court. That is such.
The answer is it's been referred to as a a multi-purpose facility.
Right, yeah. It's not just a basketball court. I mean, I think there's been, unfortunately, there was, people had said things or under the mistaken belief, yet it was never purported or never represented by the borough that it was going to be solely a basketball court. It's it's to be a a multi-purpose space.
Yes, I accept, I understand that. So the issue, the question then is answered by saying there could be a revision in the schematic of the floor plan and the use before, obviously, before the bricks start to go up, if you were inclined to do that.
Correct, and it wouldn't be just my decision, but the mayor and council and the team, et cetera, right? That to to attorney Ray Wes's point, you know, the the four corners of the building or the footprint, so to speak. I mean, those things have been ruled upon and approved by the land use board. But the 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 interior and the use, you know, subject to some parameters and as well as economics could be changed within the purview of the mayor and council and and the 220, 230 team.
Yes, and you referred to a budget, a budgetary matter. Is 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 the budget for that building public?
Is the.
Speaking of dollar amount.
So part of the contract executed, negotiated and executed by Mayor Emeritus Elizabeth White was that $3.5 million was to be utilized as part of the purchase price to be for our borough hall to be built. So we have done, we have gone to great, great lengths, you know, as part of our fiscal responsibility and steadfastness to to the taxpayers to try to accommodate or check as many boxes as we can within that budget.
The the contract of sale, I believe, indicate has a phrase that 3.5 million and any additional costs would be on the borough. So there was a suggestion there that the budget of 3.5 was not necessarily a cap if the borough wanted to make changes. Is that correct?
Yes, it it is, right. Yeah, should, if we wanted to to, you know, come in at at 4 million, right? The other 500,000 would be borne by we as the residents and the taxpayers, right? So it's not that it's that we are prohibited from spending more than 3.5, but to we're trying to stay 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 within budget.
There on the matter of the the public street. My 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 question was, will you, will you have Hampshire dedicate that as a public street either in conjunction with the sale or with exjunction in respect to the subdivision action?
I missed the beginning, I'm so 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 sorry, the beginning of your, when you were speaking, I couldn't hear you. I know it had to do with the public street, but I didn't hear what what the question was.
My question was, what was the answer to my question earlier? And and is there any agreement among those who are involved in that decision as to the importance of having that a public street in regard to future and also current situations?
No, Mr. Thomas, I think other than you, I haven't heard, we haven't, I don't remember hearing much of a conversation about turning that into a public street. But you piqued my my curiosity and I'll, you know, I'll inquire as to whether or not, you know, if there are, you know, benefits, detriments to to doing it. So on the record, I'm not going to say that we would do it or not do it. But, you know, I appreciate any insight that you can bring or any and and any suggestions that you bring to us. I'm I'm happy to to look at and at least consider.
Go, but I will repeat that if if I may at that time.
I'm again, I missed the very beginning, like the first 10 seconds when you speak, I can't hear you. I'm so sorry.
I thought I had done that in a private letter some months ago, but perhaps not. But the key, the issue here is key to the the whole question of avoiding the requirement that a public building face a public street. And the that was lit by the by the first plan by putting the two buildings together and having them face West Crescent. The situation here is that if that were a public street, I'm talking about the roadway, then the apartment building would be facing a public street, and there would be no further issue as respect to the the public law. I think it's 33D and 35D.
All all we could say to that is that the land use board approved the application as currently structured. If there are other ancillary benefits to a public roadway, I think the mayor indicated that that can be looked at. Certainly, to the extent that you want to transmit to him the ideas that you you apparently previously expressed, please do so. But the land use board did not impose a requirement that a public roadway be constructed for the purpose of approving the residential component. So the application has been approved in its current form without there being a public street there.
So I I didn't, who was who was speaking there?
Ray West. Were you able to hear his response?
I heard the response, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great, thank, thank you very much, Mr. Thomas.
Have a Merry Christmas, everyone. Thank you.
You as well, thank you. Public comment, anyone from the public wish to be heard? Okay, I'm not seeing anyone, as you recall, we are going to close session. We're going to come back briefly to adjourn to the sign and die meeting on the 7th. So I had asked for a motion to approve Resolution 20 dash 279, which authorizes the governing body to enter into closed session under contract negotiations for the Water Department. Motion?
Some moves.
Okay, so Jim's for Jim first, Liz second. Michelle, please conduct a roll call.
I think she said Holman, yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Sasso?
Yes.
Councilman Stroch?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Wazinski?
Yes.
Great. Okay, so the pub, to the public, please, the governing body is going to be entering into closed session and will only reconvene to recess the meeting. Once the session portion is finished, no formal action will be taken other than recessing the meeting to the January 7, 2021 sign, eight, die meeting. So I would, a motion. Yeah, I'm good there. We've done that.
You want to go at 9 o'clock? It's about four minutes, five minutes.
Okay, everyone, we need about four minutes, so at 9 o'clock, how are they going to come in, Michelle?
They were.
He sent it to us. She sent it to us.
Okay, so a different link for 9 o'clock, see in about four minutes. Thank you, everyone.